Hello, welcome. Susan? I am going to, we're already in open session, so we need a roll call.
Trustee Dyane?
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Yes, here.
Trustee Dolce?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Valentine?
Yes.
Trustee Worthington?
Here.
Trustee Moreno?
And Dr. Kesselman?
Here.
All right, we're all here, and welcome. It's so nice to look out and see you all. And, yeah, it's a nice crowd, and we were just, oh, and here's our- Trustee Moreno. Yeah, yeah. Present, perfect timing, as I'm rambling a little bit. Anyway, nice to see you all, and we were just kind of reminiscing back to, these meetings always have this point of reference for me, and I think, okay, it's been a little over two years since I've been doing that, and as we've, our board has been changing and expanding, and just, times are so exciting. So, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kesselman.
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy day after Fourth of July. It's great to see, oh.
Use it, that's the rule.
Always wanted to do that.
It's fun.
First, let me first wish everyone a happy July 4th. I'd also, I'm, you know, I sent an email out today, but I think that it's really important to reinforce that, you know, for the first time in literally 30 years, us making consistent arguments to the, everyone in the state of New Jersey who would hear us, we have been rewarded with 168 state-funded positions, which translates to, at least this year, coming into this year, approximately $4 million into our appropriation. And I think that the extraordinary work done by Michael Angulo, by the legislators in South Jersey, as well as legislators in North Jersey, and all the individuals that I pointed out in that email, only pale in comparison to the work that you do on a daily basis in order to position us to be able to get that kind of recognition. I'm not done. Don't say that, Claire, don't say that. We have a new, we have a new Diane, by the way. Claire Lo is right here, for those who don't know, works for Atlantic City Press. We are committed to ensuring that the projects that we have underway here on the main campus, as well on Atlantic City, as well as the growth that we have implored upon you to accept, and you have done so graciously and alike, and we know it's going to help us reach the targets that we need to make in order to provide more educational opportunity to citizens of this state. We know, we're going to go in for a little bit more this year to make sure that when we open up the Atlantic City campus, when we have everything in full swing here, when we continue the expansion of the Manahawken Campus and all of the other initiatives that we have, we don't have to do it on the backs of our students. And I want to thank each and every one of you for all that you did over the years to support what we kept putting out. I don't know how many times I've walked in front of the faculty or Fall Faculty Conference saying, "The target is to get this many kinds of, to get our appropriation recognized," and I'm pleased to say that this year, we finally got it done. So, thank each and every one of you, thank the Board of Trustees who was part of all that. Certainly not going to steal the thunder of the AFT, so I will let them talk a little bit later about, I think that they may have some pretty good news that some people might know about concerning statewide negotiations. Some nice little things for me to do now. Check presentations, we'll begin with that. Let's start with the Council of Black Faculty and Staff. Trish Collins, the President, will be presenting it. For those who don't know, the Council has an extremely long history of providing scholarships and supports the recruitment, hiring, and well-being of African-American faculty, staff, and other underrepresented groups at the university. And since 1981, this is a pretty staggering number, the Council has awarded over $300,000 to 232 students in scholarships, and will award $15,000 to undergraduate, graduate, and doctoral recipients for this fiscal year, which includes a $7,500 matched contribution from the university. So, with no further ado, we'd like to come over there. Madam Chair? Yeah, come with me.
Good afternoon, everyone. First and foremost, we could not do the fundraising initiatives without the, without, I was going to turn around, without the support of all of the faculty, staff, and individuals from across the campus and in the community. So, we just want to say thank each and every one of you. Dr. Kesselman already gave all of the good news. Please save November the 10th, 2017, 6:00 p.m. More information will follow, but the proceeds from our 2016 fundraiser netted $15,106.94. So, again, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is another, this time it's a special recognition before we provide something else. As most of you know, Christian Moreno has served as our student trustee, the alternate, a year ago, and the student trustee this past year. He graduated in May, for those who do not know, with his BA in Political Science, and he will be working in DC, working at the Migration Policy Institute, reviewing proposed immigration laws at the state and federal levels. Let me, let me just say one thing about Christian, I can say a lot of things. This past year has been among the more active student bodies that we've had in a number of years, and in fact, it reminded me of years ago how active of a student population it was. Every issue Christian weighed in on after having conducted extraordinary research and making certain that not only the student constituency, but the trustees were represented well when he represented their interests in a number of meetings that ultimately, I thought turned out to be phenomenal learning opportunities for not only students, but certainly me as the President and others, members of the Cabinet who met with him. Christian is a special young person who is going to go far, and we are all fortunate to have had him at Stockton, and we know he is going to do great things when he's in Washington, DC. With all due respect, Christian, fix it, please. Okay? Do we have something for him? It states, "The Board of Trustees and President Harvey Kesselman present this certificate of appreciation to Mr. Christian Moreno in recognition of Mr. Moreno's outstanding leadership, his service, and other significant contributions to Stockton University and the community in his role as student trustee from 2015 to 2017. Today's date, July 5th, 2017." Congratulations, Christian. Say a few words.
Hi, everyone. First and foremost, even though she couldn't get off work, I just wanted to thank my mom for everything she's done the last four years. Give me a sec, please. Just looking around the room, so many of you, whether it's Dr. Kesselman, deans, faculty and staff, have done so much for me over the last four years. I can't even begin to thank all of you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to succeed, but more importantly, thank you for letting me fail and then picking me up when I was down. Everything I am and everything I ever will be is all thanks in part to my mom and Stockton University. So, thank you.
The next item in my President's Report today is one of special note. It involves Catherine M. and Leo S. Ullman, who have committed a quarter of a million dollars, which has received $250,000 gift, to establish the Ullman Family Holocaust Memorial Room, which will become part of the Sarah and Sam Schofer Holocaust Resource Center. Catherine and Leo are noted supporters of Holocaust education, providing substantial support to the US Holocaust Memorial Museum in DC and the Jewish Historical Museum in Amsterdam. The Ullman support of Stockton's Holocaust Resource Center began in 1998, when the Shore Mall, which they owned, sponsored the exhibit, for those, some of you might remember, Anne Frank and the World. They have developed a strong connection to Stockton and the center through relationships with the center's Director, Gail Rosenthal, Professor Michael Hayes, former Dean Jan Colleen, and of course, current Dean Rob Gregg. The Ullmans' commitment is the catalyst gift of a soon-to-be-announced fundraising campaign to expand the physical footprint of the Sarah and Sam Schofer Holocaust Resource Center, as well as enhance in its programming efforts. Leo himself is a Holocaust survivor who was hidden during childhood, during the Holocaust. He spent over two years in hiding in the Netherlands, separated from his parents, who were being hidden at a different location. His memoir, 796 Days: Hiding as a Child in Occupied Amsterdam During WWII, tells his and his family's stories. We are extraordinarily grateful to Catherine and Leo for their exemplary leadership and support, and look forward to the growth of the Sarah and Sam Schofer Holocaust Resource Center. I'm going to ask Dean Rob Gregg to provide information concerning what will be some of what he donates to the center, in addition to providing the funding to expand the center.
Thank you, President Kesselman. You spoke very eloquently about the gift and what it's doing. As you can see from the room, this is a rough layout of how it will be, but it's going to increase the size of the Holocaust Resource Center by about a third, and it's going to make it more functional. The door behind the person's head there is the location of the Director's office, and that has currently been outside the Holocaust Resource Center, which has been a problem. There will also be a room for, a room for the adjuncts who teach in the Holocaust and Genocide Studies Program. We have about 1,000 students every year take our courses, and so they'll be able to use this space. There'll be tables for reading, like the Constantine T. Lewis Room for Hellenic Studies. So, we have about 21,000 people come each year to visit the Holocaust Resource Center, and so that's been a significant problem for us, having so many students come in and trying to, you know, put them in either the classroom or in the other space. Now, there will be an exhibit in this, the Ullman Exhibit, which is his artifacts that are currently at the Holocaust Museum down in Washington, DC. They will be on permanent loan here, and it's a wonderful story. The parallels Anne Frank's story, obviously, in Amsterdam, I think this, most of this is occurring in Utrecht, but it's a more optimistic story, it has a nice ending to it, and it's, but we will have an exhibit that highlights this, and it will be particularly meaningful because many of the Holocaust survivors that we've been communicating with and working with for so many years, many of them are passing away and no longer with us, and so it's wonderful to have an exhibit of this caliber here to bring meaning to the lives of these people who suffered so much, and to really bring it to life for our students who come to visit, and also the students here. As you know, and this is the last thing I'll say, we teach more classes and more students about the Holocaust and Genocide Studies than any other institution in the world, so it's really fitting that we have a site of this quality to really boost that national and international reputation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you. So, if any of you see Leo, Kathy, when they're on the campus, please, please thank them for their generosity and their commitment to ensuring no one forgets. The next item is of particular interest to me. I'm not nearly as involved as probably almost everyone in this room is anymore with the 2020 actual projects, but I do remember way back when, when I think it was Jim Kennedy, myself, and Claudine Keenan were charged at the time by the President to put together a strategic planning process that hopefully led to something like what it's become. And I think it's one of the most great, you know, the significant success stories, that it's still alive and well, and I've asked Peter Barata, who's done just a simply phenomenal job shepherding that process, to make a quick presentation on the status of the last academic year and what 2020 is, since we say it so much on the campus.
Thank you, President Kesselman. Greetings, Members of the Board and Members of the Community. It is, it gives me great pleasure to give a quick update on the 2020 process. Many of you know that the process itself began in 2008 with the formation of a steering committee, and the goal of that committee was to essentially develop a clear vision, or 2020 vision, for Stockton's long-term growth and development. And it basically assumed a balanced scorecard view of institutional performance based on four key themes. Everyone is probably familiar with the LEGS themes of learning, engagement, global perspectives, and sustainability. And the goal was to essentially take these themes and incorporate them with other elements of what makes Stockton special, the civic engagement, respect for our natural environment, obviously, learning interdisciplinary education. And a few years after that steering committee formed, we began a funding process where individuals who had ideas in support of the LEGS themes could basically seek out funding in support of those projects. It began with an annual budget of $300,000, and I'm proud to say that that budget amount has remained consistent throughout the entire many years that this has been running, so we've never experienced a decrease in funding, thanks to the Presidents and the Cabinet. It represents a multi-stage review process, where we have individuals who represent faculty and staff on the LEGS initiative teams. They work with members of the community who have ideas, and those ideas filter then up to a steering, the steering committee, that consists of many individuals at Stockton, faculty, staff, individuals who represent the union, faculty, Senate President, et cetera. All told, about 140 students, faculty, and staff have been a part of the 2020 proposal review process. As a matter of fact, I'd like to maybe just ask for audience participation, if anyone is a member of a LEGS team or the 2020 Steering Committee, past or present, would you mind raising your hand?
Yes.
Okay, so a pretty good amount of individuals who are part of that process, so thank you very much for your service. We put out two calls for proposals every year, once in the fall and once in the spring, and the goal is to make sure that the proposals incorporate key elements of what we're looking for in the 2020 process. We obviously want to make sure that the proposals have university-wide impact, we want clear alignment to the LEGS themes naturally, we look for specific budget details, as well as outcomes and how things are going to get measured. What's really exciting to me is that this year, we sort of passed a milestone. So, right now, we've funded 68 projects, but to me, even more exciting is that we passed the million-dollar mark in terms of distribution of awards. So, over the past several years, we've had a lot of great proposals, and we've hit that mark this year, so I think that's pretty exciting. Sometimes projects will seek additional year of funding through 2020, sometimes they will seek funding through an outside source, and sometimes it's sort of just a single event or activity. So, we have sort of many different options with these projects. This is a quick breakdown, although this is not sort of designed to scale, this sort of gives you a sense of how the money has been distributed over the past several years in terms of dollar amounts and the specific projects. So, it's been a nice kind of combination of all four themes. Two projects that I just wanted to kind of mention briefly from 2016 and '17 is that in the fall, we had a student spaceflight experiment program approved for 2020, and this is where students at Stockton are going to have a experiment actually launched and sent to the International Space Station for microgravity experimentation. This, actually, students presented recently in Washington, DC, and we actually had a few months ago, an article in the Philadelphia Business Journal about this project, and I'd like to thank Dr. Peter Straub, who served as the project leader for this. The second one, this is sort of a quick snapshot of the article that appeared in the Philadelphia Business Journal. The second project was From Troy to Ithaca: A Study Tour for Student Veterans. This was part of a 10-day travel tour, specific, part of a course that was specifically designed for Stockton military veterans. The course focused on Homer's Odyssey and dealt with heroic themes, as well as some of the challenges that individuals have when they return home from war. This also had an article written about it in the Press of Atlantic City, and I'd like to thank Mr. Tom O'Donnell, Jason Babbin, and David Rossell, who helped organize this activity. And then lastly, I'd like to thank President Kesselman, all of the steering committee members, and LEGS team members, as well as everyone who sort of participates in this process. Matter of fact, another quick show of hands, who has actually been part of a 2020 project? Have we have more people? Okay, so, yes, good, good.
Lidwiser.
It's a nice community activity, and we're very excited to keep running this in the future, so thank you very much for all of your support, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Peter. And there have been some, you know, unintended positive consequences as a result of the 2020 initiatives, many things which actually have changed the way we conduct business in certain ways, in certain areas. In addition, I know Dean and Zoe Pappas have provided substantial funding to continue that last project that you just, sorry, from Troy to Ithaca, so that can continue on. So, it really is doing the right kinds of things. It also, I was trying to quickly, I didn't see the numbers quickly, I jumped on it too late to see what the average amount was per entity, but it was, it's clear to me that the fact that each area, because remember, there was a lot of, not a lot, there was some discussion in the early days when we established 2020, that if we put up global awareness, we really hadn't done a heck of a lot in that area. And one of our counterarguments was that if we put it out front and say that it is really, really important and part the institution, then maybe more funding will follow, and in fact, that's just what's happened. So, keep up the great work. It's hard work. Anyone who's been part of the discussions concerning projects, and they are reviewed for, you know, thoroughly, and folks are provided input, when in fact, they are not told that they've got the funding, so that, but many have come back to get it in future times. So, kudos to all that participated in that particular endeavor, and thank you, Peter, for putting it together. One final thing, I just want to reinforce how, again, not for anything other than how grateful I am to the New Jersey Legislature, to the New Jersey Governor, for supporting Stockton's request. I'm grateful, and everyone at Stockton is grateful, because if you take that down, I want to make sure they know that. So, thank you very, very much. Go ahead.
I should have, should have opened with that, because, again, looking back two years ago at this very same meeting, who would think that we would be where we are today? So, Peter, that was great. When I, first hearing 2020, I'm not sure what other board members felt, but it was almost like a code word. I didn't quite understand what it was. Eventually, I understood, but that was beautifully done. Thank you. We're going to go into committee reports, and the first one is Academic Affairs and Planning Committee Reports. Trustee Andy Dolce.
Good afternoon. We had our meeting this morning, and before I bring Lori up to talk about the three resolutions and information, I just want to thank the faculty, because part of what's going on, I know this summer, is many faculty are working on new program development. You know, higher education is a very competitive business, and in order to stay current or stay competitive, you need to have, continue looking at your offering of curriculum, and I think that's, that's going on right now, and so I appreciate the work that's being done by the faculty in terms of developing many, many new ideas, basically, for curriculum update, new programs that keep Stockton competitive. So, with that, Lori, do you want to deal with the resolutions and other updates?
Good afternoon, Chair Wobindainager, Members of the Board, President Kesselman, colleagues in the audience. What a very informative meeting this morning. I appreciate very much the opportunity to work with Trustee Dolce as a new committee chair. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Planning Committee, I have three resolutions for the Board to act upon by way of a consent agenda. I will then conclude with three informational items. The first resolution authorizes Stockton to accept a grant for the Child Welfare Education Institute and to certify the accuracy of the contract commitments for $2,206,500. It renews and expands the contract with the New Jersey Department of Children and Families, supporting a statewide consortium of social work programs focusing on educating and developing a trained workforce in child welfare. A second resolution authorizes Stockton to accept a grant from the New Jersey Department of Education in its second year of funding for $184,402. Faculty and staff from the School of Education, including the Southern Regional Institute and ETTC, and faculty from the School of Natural Sciences and Mathematics, have been working with 32 teachers from five K-8 school districts to explore the instructional shifts required to implement the next-generation science standards. In year two, these teachers will develop tools to assess their students' understanding of the science standards. For the final resolution, I am pleased to introduce the Doctorate of Nursing Practice, DMP, degree program, which is designated for advanced-practice nurses seeking a terminal degree in nursing practice. The Doctorate of Nursing Practice is now the recommended entry level of practice for nurse practitioners by the American Association of Colleges of Nursing. The committee unanimously approved all three resolutions. I ask that the Board act on these resolutions as a consent agenda.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? So, move.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? And roll call. Trustee Dyanger? Yes. Trustee Chaconi?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Dolce?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Valentine?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
And I just have to break in for a moment. At the meeting this morning, it was suggested that when we all see our nurse practitioners, that we can call them doctor, after programs like this.
Absolutely. We now have three information items. The first item is the Career Development Committee 2017-18 Report, representing awards totaling $21,347 for tenured faculty scholarship projects. The second item is the Provost-Faculty Opportunity Funds Report, which represents $20,216 in awards for faculty projects. And finally, I'm pleased to announce the Academic Affairs Retreat, hosted by the Office of the Provost on July 12, 2017. It'll be an opportunity for faculty and staff to engage in dialogue on matters related to strategic planning and the role academic affairs has in enrollment management. Consideration was given to inviting those who don't normally interact directly with the provost to solicit their input. It's going to be a lot of fun. The theme is "The Sixties."
Theme is "The Sixties."
Thank you. That concludes my report.
I want to, I want to be there. I have bell-bottom pants.
Before Lori steps down, I'd like to particular, I'm going to ask that Dawn Conrady and Patty Weath stand and be recognized for year after year after year, we hear their grants being funded, with all the support that goes back with them. It doesn't happen without them. Patty, please, don't you be shy.
Yeah, the number on these grants, it's, they're big numbers. Okay, Student Affairs Committee Report, Trustee Ellen Bailey.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Student Affairs Committee has not met since our May 3 meeting, and so I see the floor back.
Okay. That was easy. Finance and Professionals Services Committee Report, Trustee Stan Ellis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met this morning, had a very good meeting, a lot of great questions and great discussion, and we have a consent agenda for the Board to consider, as well as a separate resolution on tuition and fees for the upcoming fiscal year. First, the consent agenda, there were several bid waivers, as well as bid waiver increases. All of these were reviewed by the committee. We'll not go into them in detail, but the committee signed off on all of the bid waivers, as well as the bid waiver increases. We also discussed this upcoming budget for fiscal '18. The budget as proposed is for $236 million in total, which is about a 3.8% increase over, over last year. This includes several assumptions, including 3% enrollment growth, it includes a, which we'll talk about later, a tuition adjustment, as well as housing occupancy at roughly 98%. It does not include the funded positions, which the President talked about earlier. So, again, I would like to reiterate our thanks to the Governor, the Legislature, and also to the President and his staff for their outstanding efforts. This would not have happened without their relentless work, so I do want to thank them so much for their efforts on our, on our behalf. This budget also, for about, for the fourth consecutive, fifth consecutive year, will also have a declining reliance on our investment fund and line of credit to balance the budget, which is a very good thing. It also calls for about $12 million in capital spending in the budget. We also- We also addressed several other resolutions, including meal plans for 2018. This was a great effort on behalf of faculty, staff, students especially, to move from, I think, we're 35 separate programs down to seven, which accounted, which also was very sensitive to balancing the needs of students who want maximum flexibility, and the needs of parents who want maximum nutrition. So, we were able to get it down to seven, and at the end of the day, the average increase in the meal plan is only $20, which works out to be about less than 1%. So, great work on everyone's part there.
That deserves a round of applause. People are cutting out $20.
Also, for the Board consideration on the consent agenda are four tuition adjustments to programs that have been in place now for several years, successfully, successful programs in place with Meridian Healthcare System for their employees, the Atlantic Care MBA Program, the Atlantic Care RN to BSN Program, and the Atlantic Care MSM Program. Again, these are programs that, in case of Meridian and the MSM Program, call for tuition discounts. In the case of the Atlantic Care MBA and Atlantic Care RN to BSN Program, call for discounts in tuition based on the size of the cohort provided. These, again, are all successful programs, and we recommend that these resolutions be adopted. Also, on the consent agenda are special housing rents for the ELS Educational Language Services Program. Basically, the change here is from a flat rate to a per-day rate of $33 per bed per day. It also calls for the use of Housing 1, in addition to, in the past, just Housing 4, and gives us greater flexibility depending on the size of this program. Also, for consideration on the consent agenda are revised housing rents for fiscal '18. Due to the projected phenomenal increase in enrollment for this fall, we are going to, we need more help with getting beds for the students. And so, this rent, or, excuse me, these housing rents, which the Board approved at the May meeting, there is a slight revise, which adds triples and quads at Seaview to allow us to be able to accommodate the projected increase in students. And finally, under the consent agenda is the recommendation to appoint Thomas R. Lloyd as student representative to the Stockton Affiliated Services Incorporated Board. Again, that is all the resolutions of the consent agenda. The Finance Committee recommends they all be approved.
Nice partnerships reflected on this all, and nice to have an appointment of a student onto the SASE Board. So, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Yes.
And questions, discussion, comments?
Very quiet.
Roll call. Trustee Diner. Yes. Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Moreno.
Yes.
Thank you. The final item for consideration by the Board, Finance Committee review this morning, is the tuition and fees for the upcoming fiscal year. The resolution calls for a 2.5% across-the-board increase in tuition and fees. This is the assumed number in the budget that was just passed. Again, it is necessary for ongoing expenses, projected capital improvements, as well as the ongoing costs associated with the development of the Atlantic City campus. Would like to note that, to put this in perspective, for the last five years, the average increase here at Stockton has been under 2%, 1.7% exactly. And this compares to average rating tuition increase of over two, almost 2.5% for the other schools in our sector. I'd also like to note that the tuition and fees together for fiscal 2018 here at Stockton are less than what the average was for fiscal 2017 for schools in our sector across the state. And also, for the schools that have reported out so far this year, their range has been anywhere from 1.8% to 3%. So, we are pretty much in the middle in terms of the number, where the schools are in terms of projected tuition and fee increases for the upcoming year. Again, we think this is a fair number that will allow us to do what needs to be done to continue the momentum here at Stockton, and the Finance Committee recommends that the Board approve this resolution.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Discussion, question, comments? Roll call. Trustee Diner. Yes. Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Ellis.
Yes.
Trustee Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Moreno.
Yes.
There were some information items that were included in the Board packet, which the Board can review at their leisure, and that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you so much. Next, we've got the Audit Committee Report. Trustee Ray Chaconi.
Thank you. The Audit Committee met on May 1, and as most of you may know, the Audit Committee deals with two separate types of issues. One is the external audit of the college's statements that are done every year. That's a very typical audit that you may think of a public company, and that's actually starting right now. We had all required communications with Grant Thornton, our external auditors, and everything went well on that front. In addition, internal auditing is done here, and many of you may know about, a year ago, we went to a hybrid approach where we used the services of Baker Tilly, which is an international CPA firm with a specialty in higher education, and they sort of supervised the internal audit. So, it's very good, because they attack areas of the college with a fresh approach in looking at it. In 2017, they did audits of the athletic department, human resources, SASE, and they're currently doing risk management. In 2018, the audit plan is to do the business planning, ADA compliance, emergency crisis management, and financial aid. So, we're really going into different areas of the school, taking a fresh approach, taking a look at them, and it's all good, it's all very good, and we look forward to this year as well. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Buildings and Grounds Committee Report would be normally Trustee Schoufer, and he's not available today, so can I turn it over to you, Don? Is that correct?
Well, it's actually turned over to me, but I am so happy to turn it over to Don. Don has pictures and videos and cartoons, so go ahead, Don.
Thank you.
Niceties.
I'm going to go backwards from what I usually do. I'm just going to, I'm going to start on Galloway, and as you all know, Galloway is currently under construction. You've all been inconvenienced, I apologize, but you know what's coming. It's about 10 major projects on campus. The Quad project is going very well. Construction is well underway, and the masonry is coming up. Windows will be coming in soon. Total enclosure probably in about two months or so. Interiors, the building should be and anticipated to be completed right around Thanksgiving. The Arts and Sciences Building, which is right behind it in terms of construction volume, if it wasn't for the Quad, Arts and Science would be your biggest project to talk about. That's all summer long, the building's offline, exterior masonry renovations, and an interior gut of all the mechanical systems for replacement, Housing 4 renovations, sidewalk renovations, new signage, restroom renovations, just Galloway's moving. The good part about that is all of that, except for the Quad, will be done before school starts in September, restored, back to your normal daily use. The Seaview renovations, for those who don't know, we are doing a major exterior renovation of the building, replacing all the windows and all of the exterior siding, ripping down all of the stucco and replacing it. That is on schedule now. Originally, it was anticipated to be done in December. Working with housing and the huge new demands, thank you, Steve, moving and increasing the need for more rooms, students starting there in September, the contractor and the architects and the construction management team have pivoted, putting a huge emphasis, and instead of December finished, they're going to be done in August, right in time for the start of school. So, that's a big win for us.
Student Affairs is appreciative of that. Got you, Steve.
And in conclusion, we're building an Atlantic City, and it's for real. It is going really well. I showed a lot of financial terms and some schedules to the Board this morning. Financially, we're in good shape. Construction, we're in good shape, and we're going to share just a quick video of the status of work, unless you haven't already seen it. That's not it. This is the parking garage, precast concrete. And that is the foundation walls for the academic building. The bottom right-hand corner, you can see the images that it will be when it's done. There's your view from the ocean. And there's the academic building again. Okay, we'll be taking requests for the next song for next month. So, please submit them to Skip West. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Don mentioned it sort of half-heartedly about that had the Arts and Sciences Building been the only project this year, that would have been a large project. And if you put that into context with there are nine or 10 other major projects on the campus, the renovations of Seaview, the renovation, expansion in Southern Ocean County, and of course, the Quad, and then the Atlantic City Gateway Project, it is nothing short of phenomenal that they've been able to juggle all these things at minimal disruption to the institution. Don, your staff, everyone associated, kudos, kudos, and more kudos. And the best news, on time, under budget. Thank you.
I think the next one should be feeling groovy.
Ties him with Lori's.
Yeah, yeah. When you see that overhead view, there's a swimming pool there. There's a, must be an apartment complex nearby, there's a pool there, and I'm thinking, how many Stockton students are going to find ways to go? I'm obsessed with pools. I keep buying Mega Millions tickets, because if I win, there's going to be a pool on this campus again.
There you go. Don knows where it's going to be. He's already begun planning it. Got to give him.
I'm going to keep buying those tickets. Development Committee Report, we are going to turn to Dr. Phil Elmore. Please, give us an update.
Good afternoon, Chair, President, members of the Board, members of the community. We are wrapping up fiscal year-end, so our numbers are really not firm yet, but they are close. I'll start with a number I reported to you in May, with the March 31 net asset numbers of the Foundation at $35.1 million. When we started the year, that number was $29.9 million. We'll have the June 30 number here in another month or so, and look for that to continue to rise. The preliminary fiscal year-end giving number is very, very strong. I'm going to start with a fiscal '15 number, which was $2,336,000 and change, was given to the institution fiscal '15. Fiscal '16, $3,191,000 and change. Fiscal '17, that number's $5,141,000 and change. So, thank you to all of our donors.
Well, that was short and very sweet. Thank you. Investment Committee Report. Trustee Stan Ellis.
Thank you. We did not meet since the last Board meeting. However, we are scheduled to meet in August to review the latest quarter. We, however, do get monthly statements from our two investment advisors, and pleased to report that we continue to exceed our benchmark of CPI plus 2.5, so we're in good shape.
Great. Thank you. So, I'm going to turn to Dr. Kesselman to talk about this resolution.
Well, this resolution really is significant. I mean, we've, you know, re-read, you know, revisited the mission statement for the first time since, I guess, 1982, or something of that nature, where we had one amendment, I think, in between. I want to, you know, thank all of the folks who've worked literally, you know, a year, if not more, on formulating.
Two years.
Well, they corrected me very quickly. So, yeah, two years on articulating a new mission, which actually, you know, is much more concise and brief, a new vision statement, some guiding principles. It's very, very honored to be able to bring this for the second reading, so that we finally have a mission statement that, you know, sort of represents who we are in the year 2017. So, kudos to everyone. Lisa Hannikers here was involved, and of course, Susan was, Susan Davenport, and Matty Diner were involved, and so many other folks were involved in this committee that really had a series of forum throughout the last two years to get all the input that we possibly could. And of course, I'm sure there were hundreds of arguments over, you know, what words should stay and which words should not. But the bottom line is, I think we're in very, very good shape as we move forward. So, I ask that somebody pass this, so we have a new mission statement filed.
We will, we will. And I suggest that if you get a chance to read it, read it out loud, obviously, every time I look at it.
Do you want to read it?
Well, I'm happy, should I read it? I'll do it quickly. "Stockton University's mission is to develop engaged and effective citizens with a commitment to lifelong learning and the capacity to adapt to change in a multicultural, interdependent world. As a public university, Stockton provides an environment for excellence to a diverse student body, including those from underrepresented populations, through an interdisciplinary approach to liberal arts, sciences, and professional education."
That is using a lot of words, very succinctly, but it really does reflect who we are, who we have been, and what we've built on for the future. So, thank you for your work on it.
It was a privilege to work with all of you who were involved with this, and a learning experience, yet another learning experience for me, Stockton University. So, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
And a second?
Having been a student here in 1982 and thinking this is very well worth the time it's taken.
Oh, my goodness, that's right. That's when you came.
Second? Second? Any other comments, questions? Roll call. Trustee Diner. Yes. Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Ellis.
Yes.
Trustee Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Moreno.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. And on the following page also is the whole Task Force on Shared Governance, which starts with the mission, but then goes to the vision, the guiding principle. Also, a lot of work and thought and care went into this as well, so. We have resolution for personnel actions. Would you like to?
Yes.
Give a word or two?
I have lots of words.
Okay, lots of words.
But not so much. I'm going to first ask that, and then I'll talk during the time I'm supposed to. I ask that, we have, as you see, a robust number of personnel resolutions, some of which I'll talk about a little bit later, one or two on there that's just breaking my heart, but we have to have them. But some that are very, very joyous. This is both a joyous time and a time to reflect upon some of the people that have been here, too. So, I ask that the Board of Trustees, you know, make a motion to approve the personnel actions, and then we'll talk a little bit when we get a chance.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call. Trustee Diner. Yes. Trustee Chaconi.
Abstained.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Ellis.
Yes.
Trustee Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Moreno.
Yes.
Okay. A couple, a couple things I want to highlight on this. Number one, a lot of new hires, but I want to point them out. One of whom is here with her husband Chad. She's our new Associate VP for Administration and Finance. Her name is Jennifer Potter. Before I ask her to stand up, I want to tell you a little bit about her. She was the is now, and I certainly hope your current university knows I'm going to do this right now, right? Good. Okay, she is the current Associate Vice President and Controller at Rider University and has has been for five years. Prior to that, she was the internal auditor for Princeton University, and then prior to that, she worked at KPMG, you know, a very substantial audit firm, for 10 years, and her primary area of responsibility were higher education institutions. She comes as well credentialed as an individual we've ever had in this area. I am extraordinarily excited about her being here, and so I ask that she stand and be recognized. Jennifer Potter, welcome to Stockton. Another individual who all of you know, she, and she's, she's with someone in the front row, 'cause she sat in the front row for the better part of 20, how many years? How many years she's sat there? Twenty-some years. Diane D'Amico, as you know, Mary Jane Bryant was a, you know, pillar of strength in her role, that she served at Stockton for five years, but retired June 30th, and that was expected, and she had come from the Atlantic City Press. I know that over the years, Diane had talked about, you know, when, her time when she leaves the Atlantic City Press, I said, "Make sure you call on us first before you do anything." They just had a search, as you know, for the position, and we are thrilled and honored. She is perhaps, no, not perhaps, she is unquestionably the most respected journalist in the area of higher education in this state. There isn't an educator, or a state college, or university, or a private college that doesn't read her works. If you go to New Jersey Askew, her material's always sitting there. She's a little nervous for a change, she, we have, we're interviewing her, so this is a little role reversal. This is a great win for Stockton in that she knows higher education, she's also very objective, and she can write an article that tells both sides. She's very strong in the quantitative area, for those who don't know, and I am pleased and honored that Diane has joined in our staff, and obviously, stand up and be recognized. Everybody in this building knows you. And the individual, and you should get to know her too, I know her from when I was on the Township Committee in Hamilton Township, which I think she was just breaking into the business, and they usually give her, you know, sort of like, places far out to break in on, and she broke in in our city council, but did an incredible job, because at the time, we were going through some issues there, some, let's see, what were you called? Maybe some collective bargaining issues, and when I got elected, we were in the process to have to resolve them, and she covered it extremely well, and we got to know each other tangentially, so, I know you, but let the community get, at least, I know this is like off-ground, just stand up and be recognized, they need to know who you are. Claire Low from the Atlantic City Press. There are a couple retirements that you know about, one that, that you know about, one I wrote everyone, but one I didn't, I didn't write anyone, but I'm gonna use today's here. The New Jersey Association of State Colleges and Universities is the umbrella group for the college presidents and Boards of Trustees chairpersons. It is statutorily based, and was founded when there was a, when there was a need to, you know, reorganize higher education, and New Jersey Askew was founded. And the original executive director of New Jersey Askew is a fellow by the name of Dr. Darrell Greer. When he decided to retire from New Jersey Askew, where he had been, you know, had the choice, seriously, the choice, to go to virtually any Stockton, any Stockton, any college or university in the state of New Jersey, public or private, he was being offered positions. He chose Stockton. He chose Stockton, and we are indebted for what he's been able to do here. Person of immense integrity, impressive academic credentials, and just a first-rate human being who knows his, he's forgotten more about higher education than most of us will ever know. Dr. Darrell Greer is retiring November 1st in 2017.[851.23][851.23](applause) Another retirement, we've worked together a long, long time, 30-some years. She was the person that was charged with building the campus life part of Student Affairs, counseling, health services, all that. She did it under difficult conditions, not a lot of money, not a lot of support, but every day, hard work. I remember when we hired her as Assistant Director of the Counseling Center, to each of the changes in her duties and responsibilities at Stockton, she's been here like 32 years, three years was a cane prior to this, was a game changer. Student Affairs would not be as you know it without her fingerprints that were all over it. She helped build Student Affairs, she worked very closely with my predecessor as the Vice President for Student Affairs, Joe Marchetti, and of course, when, I mean, my successor, and then during the time when I was the VP for Student Affairs, to build that division. Her people are here, standing ovation for...[930.62][930.62](applause) And you have all semester to enjoy her, she's not leaving until January 1st. On that note, just so folks know, we did, and you saw in the Board materials today, hire the search firm Witkefer, who as most of you know is one of the more prestigious search firms in the country, I see people who are shaking their head yes, and they, they will have the search, they have assured us it will be completed by January 1st. Dr. Laurie Vermeulen will chair that search, she's putting together her search team, I think she'll be announcing that in the very near future, so we look forward to everyone's input in what is a very, very important position at Stockton, particularly given the expansions that we have going on. So tee, we have a lot of time to celebrate, and we shall. One other, another, now this is a person that has been here three years, maybe three years, I have it, three? Three. You talk about a game changer in three years. The School of Health Sciences, under her leadership, has beyond blossomed, it has absolutely grown in an incredible way. Never does this person complain about growth, never did she complain about resources. She got them, I mean, I didn't say she wasn't good at getting them. She never did anything but accept the responsibility that she was charged with when we hired her, to build a school, and she built a school rapidly. She's put forth academic programs, sometimes folks say, "How does she push them through so quickly?" 'Cause she's deeply committed to getting things done, and she got them done, and she did it, and she has been, and this is every single school, and every single employee, and every single student, okay, owes some indebted to, because she helped us during a time when we started to dip in enrollment, and then all of a sudden, it turned around, and it turned around. When you look at Stockton, over the years that I've been able to look at Stockton, we were going through, we had gone through show, but a difficult time, and we needed some things to reach, re-attract students to this campus, because we had dipped, and I'll show those numbers sometime, so you can see it clearly. Teresa Bartolota did just that, you are terrific, we were all indebted to you, we will miss you, so thank you, we know why you're leaving, we understand you, so do. And Monmouth is one lucky place, I can tell you that. A couple of other moves I made, as you recall, earlier, back in, in, I guess it was, I don't even remember, a couple months ago, I put out an email to everybody about managerial reassignments that I was intended to make as a result of, as a result of the retirement of Charles Ingram. As you know, I appointed Michael Ngulo at the time as the interim VP for Administration and Finance. He's done an incredible job in a very short period of time over there, but that does not come as a surprise to me. I've also now recommended that you just appointed, on the managerial assignment, that Brian Kowalski assumed the roles, interim General Counsel, he did a phenomenal job, as you all well know, was the architect of putting together the package on the Atlantic City Gateway Project, and knows real estate law as well as anyone I've ever met, quite frankly, and so I'm very honored. And then finally, the promotion of Don Hudson to Vice President for Facilities and Operations. I can't tell you, you know, people say, "You're so busy, Harvey, you're so..." I am not the busiest person on this campus. He is the busiest person on this campus, and I really mean...[1194.23][1194.23](laughter) Okay. And I, and I say this, because if he makes a mistake, it costs millions. To juggle this many projects of this intensity, with, some of which are, we're building, some of which, others are building, some of which, we're not even sure who's building, and financing, and to pull all of that together, and do it in a way without any drama associated with it, you are to be commended, and so, a very worthy structural reclassification of your current position. Those are some of the ones that I want to announce, and I'm sure there's some Cabinet members that would like some of the others, I hope I didn't miss anyone, there's some academic ones that I think Laurie might want to mention. So, that concludes my remarks on this.
Very good.
Thank you. We're on to other business, and then on to comments from the Board of Trustees, any comments? Go ahead.
This goes along with Tommasa, I just wanna put a shout-out to the Learning Access Program at Stockton. This is such a wonderful program, and they do their job in such a quiet and dignified manner, they actually had to do some research to find out who they report to, so forth. The Learning Access Program, a student with a disability goes there, they evaluate it, they don't give anybody an easy way out, or an easy way through the school, but they do so in such a private, quiet, helpful manner. They make a difference to some students that really, really need it, and wouldn't be successful without it, and I just wanna say thank you for that.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to say to Dion Davis, for those that don't know, he's the upcoming student trustee alternate, just keep a lookout for him, because he's a rising star, and who would've thought two kids from Atlantic City High School would end up here, Dion?[1329.33][1329.33](applause)
Stand up and give a wave, stand up.
Thank you, thank you, Christian, happy to have you come on board very soon. Any other comments from the Board? Comments from the public? That would be y'all.
I'm pleased to introduce the newest member of our faculty, Dr. Lorene Cobb, Director of Clinical Education and Physical Therapy. Dr. Cobb received her Doctor of Physical Therapy degree from Stockton University. She also holds an MS in Health Sciences from Seton Hall University. Dr. Cobb has an extensive amount of experience working as a physical therapist in the private sector, as well as serving as an adjunct faculty member in the Physical Therapy Program at Seton Hall University. Welcome to Stockton. I also wanted to share an email I sent a couple of weeks ago, in honor of Teresa Bartolota, so if she could stand and be embarrassed, that'd be okay too.[1399.02][1399.02](laughter) It is with a heavy heart that I share the news that Dr. Teresa Bartolota will be leaving Stockton at the end of the summer. Dr. Bartolota has accepted an incredible opportunity to join the faculty of Monmouth University as tenured professor in the Department of Speech Language Pathology. There she will work in a funded program dedicated to providing support to families of Rhett Syndrome. She will be able to continue her research in this area, and work closely with faculty and students. I know that this opportunity is particularly meaningful to her personally, as she continues to loving care for her daughter, who suffers from Rhett Syndrome. Dr. Bartolota has served as the Dean of Health Sciences at Stockton for the past three years. She has led her school through an enriching period of significant growth, and we are also very thankful for that leadership. The School of Health Sciences has blossomed because of her focused attention on empowering her faculty in ways that allow them to best serve our students. For example, with Dean Bartolota's support, students have benefited from study abroad experiences focused on the health sciences. Under her leadership, the exercise science and the transal program have been initiated. New programs in respiratory therapy and the doctor of nursing practice are in the pipeline. An expansion in Manahawken that features Stockton's health science programs is in progress, and the new health science building will be completed before the end of 2017. During her tenure, the school earned and maintained accreditations for programs that are highly competitive and bring much prestige to Stockton. I'm extremely proud of Teresa Bartolota's work, and feel so privileged to have had the chance to know her, and to bear witness to her extreme professionalism, her immense dedication, and her daily kindness. Please join me in expressing our appreciation to Teresa for her excellent service as dean, and wishing her well as she enters this new chapter in her life. Thank you.
Well, everyone, I have some people I want to welcome to, that the President has not stolen the thunder on. So, we have our new Assistant Director of Events and Engagement, Alisa McMacan, who is gonna be starting on July 10th, I believe, Alicia, and she comes to us from Atlantic Cape. We also have Stacy Clapp, who'll be our Director of Digital Engagement, and she's starting on July 24th, she also is from Atlantic Cape. And one of our own, Kristy Cunningham, and will be in Human Resources as the Associate Director for Training and Organizational Development.
Sorry, I just can't stay seated, you know, you're here a year, and you gotta keep getting up and talking. But anyway, I wanted to congratulate some in my office, when I came here a year ago, I looked at the org chart, and I said, "How many people report to me?", and then Andy Dolce said, "You can never have more than 15 people report to you."[1586.64][1586.64](laughter) So, I've done some reorganizing, and I'll be sending out a note about that later today, but I'm pleased to say that I've appointed Michelle McDonald, Associate Vice President for Academic Affairs. She'll have a number of units reporting to her, including our instructional sites, our Director of Continuing Studies, Global Engagement, a bunch of things, yeah. And also, Dr. Cara Hood, who will be the Associate Provost for Academic Planning, Strategic Planning, and Accreditations. She will have eLearning reporting to her, as well as the Liaison for Global Engagement, and some other things as well, related to that topic. So we've moved a couple of things around, and I'm really pleased to have been here this year, and been able to see all that goes on, and recognize that, you know, having them all directly to me, doesn't really make a lot of sense, when I have these excellent people who can help with that, so thank you all.
I just wanna know, is it more than 15 people to report to? Michelle, don't count.
I wanna take this opportunity as the...
Get out of the way.[1663.38][1663.38](laughter)
Oh, that's great, that is great.
Dammit, I'm bringing this puppy home. Roger Jackson and I.
We used to do a vaudeville routine several years ago.
I guess it's on a time...
Yeah, so now we're philosophers, which is...
We just drink together.
Yeah.[1686.38][1686.38](laughter)
Yeah.
So, we, we're gonna try this as a coordinated thing, but since we're both going deaf, it's really not working.
What?
So I ju... Exactly. So I just want Ann to have the privilege and honor of announcing, no, 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 this is, as you may remember from our last Board of Trustees meeting, this was not an easy period of time for us, and I want to take this opportunity, in much better circumstances, to acknowledge the extraordinary leadership of Dr. Ann Pomeroy, our President of the Stockton Federation of Teachers for this past five years, who is now going to get me a cup of coffee, apparently.[1730.14][1730.14](laughter) Oh, no. And I want to, with all of the work and effort she has done, to have her make the announcement.
The Stockton Federation of Teachers is proud to announce that we have a tentative contract with the State of New Jersey for the members of the full-time and part-time unit. Nothing is settled until it's ratified by the membership, but we're pleased with the contract, and good Lord, it was a lot of work. I want to thank President Kesselman for the pressure that he put in order to remove completely irrational pieces that were on the table, and get those swept off. It was an effort, I know, and we were talking to some of the same people, so we know how what an effort it was. I wanna thank the members of the Board of Trustees, who were patient with us and kind in hearing our pleas repeatedly for a contract, and any of you who were able to also influence anyone who had anything... to also influence anyone who had anything to do with the process, I thank you for that. Same thing with the community, for being behind us. We were talking in HR today about the fact that the community at Stockton was so supportive of the members as we struggled and, and marched and vocalized and, and tried so hard to get people aware of the fact that we had been without a contract for almost two years. So I thank you also for your support. We are by far and away the best adjusted group of folks in the state when it comes to the colleges and universities. Everyone is jealous of us, and that's great, let's keep that going. So thank you very much. Roger is taking over as President, and if he had not been at the table, we never would have gotten this done. I'll explain that in private to some people at some point, but thank you very, thanks to Roger also for being there with the negotiating team. Finally, there are two other individuals. One of them is Michael McGarvey, who brought his expertise and his experience, his long experience with the Stockton Federation of Teachers to the table as well. So that was the core of the three members. And Stacy Rose, who was our VP for Professional Staff, came in to give input on the professional staff issues and sat at the table in Mont, in the long drive to Montclair as well, so I thank her as well. Thanks, everybody.
And I just want to say, Ann has mentored me very well and taught me very well, so I just want you to be put on notice. This is the only Board of Trustees meeting that you're getting off without me coming up and saying stuff. So this is your one free pass. Enjoy it, and I'll see you at the next one.
I'll let you up there. One second, Pedro. The, the, we had some folks, Tom Chester, who, those of you who know Tom has a really good sense of humor, put together a number of little quotes that we wanted to show banners, we're not going to do it today, about how pleased management is, by the way, that this took place. We really wanted this, and I'm talking about not just the board and, and the cabinet, but management here, that this could be reached. I want to also say something that, that I hadn't gotten a chance to say before on this, before other people can talk. There was an opportunity, and it was a really critically important opportunity when the Governor, State Senator Sweeney, and every major political figure was at the boardwalk at our groundbreaking. And the, and the AFT could have certainly come to that event and, and made a statement, but out of respect for the bigger picture, the bigger picture long-term, okay, they didn't. And I, that showed extraordinary restraint, but it also showed at, when push comes to shove at Stockton, whether it's union or management, when it's Stockton at play, everyone rallies around. So thank you for that day, okay? And you all, we all ought to give them both one for all that they did to make this happen.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Dineger, President Kesselman, members of the board, members of the university community. I just wanted to take a moment and thank President Kesselman for funding a project for Atlantic City boys. We're targeting about 300 young boys from Atlantic City, from middle school and high school, and we're bringing them here to Stockton University for a full-day immersion. It's a joint proposal between the Dean of Students' Office and the School of Education, Dr. Keenan and Dr. Gray. And to build on that momentum, talking about Atlantic City, now, I would like to say that one of the things that we're doing with that funding, and thank you to the team in media that does a phenomenal job for us, they're working with us to build a documentary that tells the stories of young boys that came from Atlantic City, what contributed to them being successful within the city, but also what contributed to them to be successful here at Stockton University. These two young men in front will be featured in that documentary, and their stories will be told, and that's only made possible by the countless efforts of our university community and the leadership here on the board. Now, I thank the President and, and Dr. Gonzalez and everyone around for helping us build that community of support and, and building positive energy for us going into Atlantic City, because there is a lot of work to be done. One other thing I had mentioned at a prior board meeting about us securing President Santa Ono, who is the President at the University of British Columbia in Canada, coming to speak on him and his issues wrestling with mental health. He was one of the academic leaders that first went public and, and mentioned that on two occasions had committed, attempted to commit suicide. That is very powerful, and that story is very powerful to our community here, where in my time here, we've lost a few team members along the way and a few students, and that's very sad. But that date is November 17th. The date for the project with the young men from Atlantic City is October 24th. And lastly, I wanted to say that for the past 15 years, I've had the wonderful opportunity of working with one of the strongest leaders here that this university campus has ever seen, truly a champion for our students and for advancing the goals and aims of Student Affairs, and you will be missed, and thank you again. And one thing that she would always say, that she enjoyed, a poem in my office, "Siempre en la lucha, porque la lucha está en nosotros." Always in the struggle, because the struggle is within us. So thank you again, thank you all.
Well done, Pedro. Sharon Shulman has a huge announcement.
I never, I never thought I'd say this, but I'm hoping the Atlantic City Press doesn't cover this comment right now, because we plan to make an announcement next week on this one. But the, the Hughes Center is getting ready to do its biannual Hughes Center Honors, where we've honored Brendan Byrne, we've honored Governor Kane. This year, we're doing something a little bit different, and among our honorees, the Featured Lifetime Achievement Award, we have twisted the arm of Ambassador Bill Hughes to say nobody deserves it more than Ambassador Bill Hughes to get the Lifetime Achievement Award. He will be there, and there will also be, we have five other honorees for different things, and this will all come out in next week's announcement, but there's something a little special about this one. We decided we would try and reach somebody that Ambassador Hughes, when he was a congressman, used to ride the train with to go to Washington, and he would pick it up in Delaware and they'd come together and get, see if we could get him to come, honor him at no cost. And we have former Vice President Joe Biden coming in for that event. That will be, that will be on November 9th, and there will be a lot more details coming out in about a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, I think that is it. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussions? Hearing none? Oh.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you all for being here.